I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I would like to ask everyone to remain standing for a moment of silence for Abilio Shaves, the father of elementary teacher Melanie Shaves. This is the October 19 meeting of the Clinton School Committee. This meeting is being held both in person and remotely in accordance with the governor of Massachusetts' March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, section 20. The remote meeting is through via Google Meet technology. Can we have a motion to approve the bills?
So moved.
Second.
Motion having been made and seconded, any discussion there being none? All those in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Can we have a motion to approve the minutes from the meeting held October 5?
So moved. I'll second.
Motion having been made and seconded, any discussion on the minutes from the meeting of October 5? There being none, all those in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Do we have any public comment tonight? Yes, Ms. Kristin?
The teachers are looking forward to our professional development day on staff time. We're going to get more training on check-in hours.
Terrific, thank you. At this time, Dr. Meyer.
Thank you. So first, I just want to update you on a leave of absence request. We have a leave of absence request from Megan McLeone. She is a kindergarten teacher. She was new hire this year. Is a remote kindergarten teacher. This is actually a maternity leave request for probably go into effect right around Christmas. So the, I don't think there's any action necessary because it's a protected leave, but I just wanted to update you that she has notified us of that leave and we're working on it.
Thanks for letting us know. Please wish her well.
Financial update for FY '21 first quarter. So in your packet, you have a few pages here. This is basically, this is the line-by-line update for budget of where we stood as of First page is, there's nothing too exciting. On the second page, you can see how we are projected to be in the negative on things like kindergarten teachers, regular ed teachers for elementary school, regular teachers for the middle school, regular teachers for the high school. Those are all projected into the negative. However, there are some other line items that kind of help make up for that. We have some money left remaining from the special ed summer school, a few lines below that. CES sped teachers came in under, middle school sped teachers is currently under, although we do have to, the middle school one, we do have another position that we are filling right now that will eat into some of that. The substitutes at the bottom shows a balance of $103,000, but that is not, I just made a note, that's not encumbered. We do have a few permanent subs right now that we know are drawing down on that account, but we didn't encumber it because of the nature of the contract. If you go to the next page, the fourth line down, you have CES Special Ed Instructional Assistance, there's a balance of $117,000 there. And then a few down is the CES librarian. It's a balance of $88,000 because that position was moved to the CMS regular ed teacher. So the, for the most part, and this is why I kind of gave you that separate salary breakdown last week, because when you look at the salary accounts, while each individual account is very, is off, our net salary spending is within the budget at this point. So for all those crazy ones that are over in salary, there's usually a corresponding salary line right now that is under. There's not a whole lot else I wanted to draw your attention to. You know, there are some things in here that are not encumbered yet. We have not received our first bill from DBUS yet, so we don't have any transportation encumbered. We haven't received our bill from, for vocational education yet from ASABET, so we have not, we've not encumbered that. And we have not encumbered all of the coaching salaries, although at this point, probably for the next update, obviously we'll be able to encumber some of them now that we have some sports up and running. But at the time, we were putting this report together, we haven't, obviously haven't paid any of those yet, and we weren't sure exactly what was, what was the status was for everything. So it's showing that right now, you know, our budgeted amount was $23,599,095. Year-to-date, we've spent just under $2 million. We've encumbered about $16,633. That's basically, most of that is salary that we know, fulfilling people's contractual obligations. And that leaves us with, right now, an unencumbered balance of about $5 million. But as I mentioned, that'll go fairly quickly when some of those bigger ticket items like the ASABET tuition and transportation kind of come into play there. So we'll continue to update it, but I think right now, there's no, like I said, there's no major concerns as far as any of the other lines. I think for a lot of things, for like trans, supplies, we've tried to be very strategic about what we ordered. So even though in the original budget request, teachers might have wanted to purchase certain things for their classrooms or whatever, we've tried to, tried to make sure that we're sort of buying the things that we know we're going to actually need, given the new, the new model. And some, and we've had to make some adjustments to those things too, because there might be things originally we were going to buy that we're going to share, that now we know we can't really buy those types of things. So as of now, I think we're in good shape. We'll learn a little bit more, like I said, once I can get some hard numbers on the transportation, that'll help us. And once we get our first half of the year bill from ASABET, we'll be able to go ahead and probably encumber that amount, and that'll, that'll start kind of tightening this up a little bit as we head into the next quarter. Does anyone have any questions on first quarter budget update? And I know Glenn is here to help answer any questions if you have any.
Hey, Glenn, thanks for being here. Any questions?
Yeah. Yep.
Was that a question?
No.
No, okay.
The one other financial update I will provide is, I do believe that the, the select men are going to, I believe, be entertaining on Wednesday, the topic of a potential town meeting in December, and special town meeting. And what that would be to do is, and this is sort of what, what Mr. Bailey just sort of asked, this budget's based on the budgeted amount that was, what we thought we were getting at the time. Since then, the governor's revised budget has the school system getting, or the town, I guess, getting an additional almost $900,000 in Chapter 70 money than, than what this budget was based on. Because at the time, we did a conservative, the town budget was based on even flat funding for Chapter 70 for this year. So the idea that special town meeting might be to look to not really increase our budget, because I don't think we necessarily, I think we're, we're okay how we're going right now. But what it would be to do would be to increase the allocation so that more of that Chapter 70 money that came in was allocated to the schools. And then what we would do is, we would take a vote to revise our budget so that we could use less of our circuit breaker and less of our school choice. And then what that would allow us to do is, that would allow us to carry that money over into next fiscal year. And the anticipation from all the forecasting right now is that this year hasn't really been that bad of a fiscal year because there's been so much COVID money that has come to the town and the schools and across the state. But they're worried that next year, when you see the results of decreased tax revenue going into towns, and then you might not have this additional COVID funding coming in, that next year could be the difficult budget year. So what the idea would be to do is to sort of just work with the town and the finance committee to try to possibly reallocate that money to better position us for, better position the town as a whole for FY '22. So that's, that's, that's just on the radar. I think the selectmen are going to take that up. And then part of why they would need to do that is, part of the timing for that has to do with sort of when the town has to do other certain fiscal reporting and setting tax rates and those types of things. So they need to make sure that they've, they've accounted for the, the money that's been received from the town. So we just want to, but you know, as it is, none of those numbers are finalized, but that's pretty much what the governor's revised budget came out with. So we're starting to feel more confident about those Chapter 70 numbers and some of the local aid. All right. The next topic was facilities. And we, I know I shared with you the middle school assessment, we talked a little bit about the square footage last time. We talked briefly about it in the, a little bit about it in the safety committee meeting. I know Russ is here tonight. I don't know, Russ, is there any specific aspects of the, of the report you wanted to highlight?
Well, we found this square footage, our home, also Baytown schools, clear and in pretty good shape. And all our assumptions proved to be correct, monitoring planning for COVID. And the reports validate they've been doing a good job so far, and what our next steps are. So if there's any specific questions, we can address those.
Thank you. Any questions from the committee for Director Carlstad? Doesn't look like it.
We are going to do a study at high school, in the, in elementary school, taking a study that will have all preschools covered. Our big campus contract has tomorrow. Get that going.
So just to reiterate that, just in case, just to get it in the camera if people couldn't hear. We are planning on doing a similar study for the high school and the elementary school, similar to the one we did at the middle school. You know, I think this is something that while, while they're, basically while there's, the COVID funds exist to try to look at these systems, it's good for us to, to take advantage of that, look into it. And if there are any modifications that need to be made or that we could make that would be beneficial, then you know, if we could, you know, there, there is certain money that has been allocated to towns for those types of repairs. And right now, unless it's extended, that money has to be spent by December 31st. So I think looking at what we could use that, you know, what we could use that money for in the spirit that that's an allowable expense from that, from that allocation, I think is a prudent move. Any other questions on facilities? Okay. Just some other reopening updates. Current Clinton data, so I did include the updated graph here. Shows that our, since our last meeting, the data on October 7th had us at a 7.1 in terms of average daily incidence for 100,000 people, and on October 14th had us go back up to 7.6. So you can see sort of from that graph that, you know, we've, we keep getting up to that 7.6 and then kind of drop a little bit, getting back up, dropping a little bit. So we've been, you know, we've been staying consistently in that yellow. You know, the thing, our positivity rate is down, is still very low, it's under 2, 1.96. However, I do know that we are anticipating, kind of in our conversations with the Board of Health, that it is probably likely that we would be, on Wednesday, when the data is released, that we would probably be a red community as of Wednesday. So that is, that is what we are anticipating, just based on the number of cases that we know internally, or probably published right on the website, it's not like it's a secret, but the, when you kind of work out the math for it, it would project that we would be in the red. As always, we'll have to wait till we get the state's final results, because I know sometimes they, they do some cleaning of that data and, and those, you know, making sure they're properly attributed to the right towns and those types of things. Just a reminder that if we were to go into the red, one week in the red is not reason to panic, according to the DESE. They're actually saying that before we really switch models, it should be three weeks in the red, which would mean, you know, most likely if we were in the red this week on the, what day is that, the 21st, I think it would come out? Then most likely, if you have a, remember, was we kind of seen through this whole thing, it's a 14-day average. If you had one week that was particularly high, it's, that week's going to stay with you the next, the next week. So I would anticipate that we would probably be in the red, you know, you never know, but apparently, you know, depending on how this week plays out. But it would be likely with, with a, with a week with some higher cases last week, that you would end up with a week in the red potentially on the 21st and a week in the red on the 28th. Then the last week would fall off, and we would see where we, where we are for November 4th. So I think the, you know, the, how we respond between now and really October 31st, because the Wednesday data is kind of, it's usually for the week before, really between how, how our cases go between now and October 31st is really going to play an important role for, you know, what we might need to look at moving forward come, come the first week of November. So, you know, we're just like, ask people to continue to make, you know, smart decisions, make sure they're following the guidelines, make sure if your student is sick, or you're thinking potentially could be sick, please keep them home. And, you know, I think everyone's been doing a great job in school, wearing masks and all those types of things, staying socially distant. I think the schools, we've seen, we haven't really had any issues in return, in terms of that. And actually, there's some new research that's starting to come out about the fact that they're saying that schools really aren't the sort of super spreaders that people feared. But that's, you know, it's, it's not the caveat, it's, it's because of all the precautions that schools have put in place, right? Normal school might have been the super spreader that people feared, but when all the precautions put in place, it has not been. And so far, you know, knock on wood, we have not seen any evidence of spread related to the school system. So that's been, you know, any other, any, as cases come up and we try to work with the Board of Health, we haven't seen anything that has been indicated that there was transmission because of close contacts related to the school. So, so I think overall, you know, I think as far as the school's concerned and the, and the procedures and practices we put in place, I think they're working well. I think that the, you know, the concern is, and you're seeing it across the state, you're seeing it across the country, is that just things are getting colder, people are staying inside more, there's those types of things, and cases are kind of on the rise. So I know, I think, you know, at one point there was like 20 red communities, and there was 40, and there was 60, and I think there's probably more joining this week. So we'll continue to monitor that and monitor the, the state, the state's guidance if any of it changes. They did say, we did have a meeting with the commissioner last week, and one thing that the commissioner said is that this week, they're planning on trying to release some other guidance about how to interpret some of the red numbers. So you could try to figure out, you know, based on, you know, not all red is created equal, I always try to say that, you know, red is anything over 8. So, you know, 8.4 for us is like two cases different, but there are some towns in Massachusetts where, you know, they're at 40, you know, so it's, that's, that's a lot. So they're also looking at different guidance for things. There were some communities where, you know, maybe you have a college in the community or a prison in the community or a large nursing home in the community that might have been attributing to spread that's impacting your community's numbers, but not necessarily indicative of the community as a whole. And the other thing that the commissioner said was looking at some guidance around smaller towns, which I'm not sure where we fit, if they're considering us a smaller town or not, but smaller towns in terms of if you're working with your Board of Health and you can kind of attribute your rise in cases to sort of one particular family or one particular household or something like that, where you're not concerned that it's community spread, what is sort of the guidance on, on making those decisions. So, and I think the DESE recognized that as more communities going into red, they need to clarify that, that guidance on how to respond to that, so that we're, we have not received that yet, but we are, we are hoping to receive it.
But I appreciate you sharing that, that there is context and, you know, not all of the communities and not all of the red indicators on the map are created equal. And I think it's important for us to, to continue to be both proactive in terms of the models that we have, but, but prudent when it comes to looking at that data. And what that means is we continue to work with our Board of Health.
Yep. And I think, and we've said it all along, we want to try to follow the guidance. And I think that's, that's what all of our plans and MOUs and everything have really been grounded on, is we want to try to follow the guidance. And the guidance right now is saying three weeks, and we'll see what the other clarification is on, on, when you do go into the red and those types of things.
Mary, do we meet, do we meet that Monday before? Is it the second, our next meeting?
Yeah, we meet the second.
Which would be the Monday before if that was three weeks, right?
Right. So it would be, we would know at that point if we had two weeks, and we could potentially discuss at that meeting what it might look like if, if the third...
Would be two days later, right?
Yeah, which would be two days later. And I think our safety committee, we scheduled it for the week right before that. So the safety committee can meet Thursday before, is it the 29th or something like that? So, so I think we have safety committee lined up for October 29th, school committee meeting on November 2nd, and then, and then the fourth is when the, that, that report would come out, which could, which could potentially be a third weekend red. And hopefully we'll have our, our ducks in a row, and we'll have looked at the most recent guidance, and we'll kind of be prepared for how we want to respond if, if that is the case. And we'll have a better idea if that's going to be the case as we get there. Thanks. Any other questions on the, on the data? Okay. And I would say, I mean, I, we do communicate with, we are communicating with the Board of Health constantly. So I mean, I think it's, it's a pretty, pretty, pretty good system as far as, I think, communicating, you know, how we might, who we might need to identify in the school system at this point.
Yes, Steve, I would just say that I also commend you for the amount of visibility you've given our parents.
Agreed.
And that communication, because I think we've always talked about the consistency of following the data, but I think you've done a very good job educating people on what that means. So as the data changes and the script changes and the guidance changes, just giving parents an opportunity to understand how, how we view that and what it means to them, because it's not like all of a sudden we'll flip a script two weeks from now and they won't have been educated on how things have been changing dynamically. So I think it's, it's really good that you continue to do that.
Yeah, I think it's, well, thank you for that, but I think that's, I mean, that's, I feel like that's half my job right now is data monitor.
Yeah.
The, the next update here was just that, an announcement from the USDA. If you remember originally, that the USDA did continue free meals through the end of the, the year essentially, the end of the calendar year. Now they have extended that through June 30th.
That's terrific.
And what's, what's good about that is, I know that Mr. Frato and Ms. Armstrong and Mr. Van Ass have been working on really trying to make sure that our, our direct certification numbers in our, in, in our lunch program are, that we're really capturing as many of those numbers as we can, and that we're hoping that, you know, we think this could end up being that by the time, you know, even if the USDA's waiver extends by the end of this year, we might be poised to still continue with the free meals through the community eligibility provision going into next year. But we're just working on continuing to clean up that data, and it's just nice that this, you know, this USDA waiver gives us some time to really, really capture that. There's some, there's some nuances to that. The state has gone to like a, a direct certification program, and they did it a few years ago. But the, there are some other things you can capture that sometimes aren't in there. For example, you know, there might be two kids living in the same household and, and one showing up as a direct certification, well, anyone else living in that household also counts, but you have to go in and sort of claim that and fix that. So just sort of going through and really trying to just, just clean up that data, we think will really help capture those numbers better and probably make the community eligibility provision a more feasible thing. I know we looked into it a few years ago, and the numbers weren't, didn't quite add up, but I think right now, we're, we're much more poised to make it happen. Student travel and out-of-state and overdites. So there's some things, the first one is, I know there was a trip to Spain that was scheduled for April vacation, kind of like similar to, it was supposed to be the Ireland trip last year, if you remember that. And I believe the advisors on their own already made the decision that they're just, they're not going to run that trip this year. And part of it was because of the, and part of it's because obviously the conditions, but even if you wanted to bank on maybe the conditions would improve, remember last year, there was, there was quite a nightmare across the state as far as getting money back from travel companies and those types of things. So they've decided to forego that trip this year. That does leave sort of two other major events. One was the Washington DC trip. We typically would go in November. We said that that trip was going to be, not going to happen in November, but we did tell the advisors at that point that they could start looking into maybe something in May. But I do think at this point, they're, you know, so now the advisors have come up and they basically said, you know, are we really going to have a trip in May? Do you think that's really something we could do? Because if they are, they need to start fundraising. And I think in reality, I don't think it's going to happen. And I don't think that with the guidance, it's anything that's going to be feasible to do this school year. And the same would go for like an overnight trip to Nature's Classroom. So what we are, what I'm recommending is that basically, we just announce to parents at this point that for this, for the duration of this school year, we're not going to do any of the overnight or out-of-state trips. And I don't know, I don't know if you want to vote on that or if you're comfortable with that.
Yeah, I mean, I certainly would support it, and I'll entertain a motion to, to restrict any out-of-state or overnight travel for the duration of the 2020, 2020 school year, 21 school year.
I'll make that one.
Okay.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion?
So the Washington DC trip is normally in the fall?
Right, it's normally in, they'd normally go in like two weeks, yeah.
Right now, yeah. So are we, we're not making any decisions about next fall?
No, this wouldn't be for next fall, this would just be, so what we had told parents, because remember, they normally start doing fundraising almost a year before.
Well, that's what I'm thinking, they got to start making payments for the next fall.
Right. So they, but they don't normally really do that till the spring. So the, so there was some money that was fundraised last year, we would, we would refund that money to the, to the parents or any payments that were made, we would refund that money to the parents who had made any payments. But at the time, we knew we had to cancel the trip for, for November, that was not a question, right? But then the, we thought maybe, you know, who knows, we could see if, you know, how this thing plays out, and we could maybe look, we started looking into what would the cost be to go in May and those types of things. But I just think that, you know, it, it doesn't, to do out-of-state travel, we're, we're actually going to be, you know, unless, unless a lot changes, I mean, you can't fill a bus, you can't, you know, how are you going to sleep kids in hotel rooms? I mean, it's just, when you think about the logistics of those things and trying to, trying to do that, I mean, we've talked about maybe trying to start lining up potentially some alternatives, so that if things were better in the spring, they could do either day trips, or they've also, there's some places have been starting to set up like virtual field trips, those types of things, so that you might be able to see, see places down there. I mean, I know, you know, it's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of work and a lot of risk that goes into field trips anyway. And I think when you, when you start combining all the, all the COVID restrictions, I don't think it's a risk worth, worth taking.
Steve, is there, this could be a conversation for another day, but I mean, the Washington DC trip is always so well done, and the kids have a blast, right? They, they come back with their sweatshirts, they come back talking about the experience, and I think that the schools have always done a fabulous job for the kids. Is there any thought maybe longer term to say the kids that would miss out on it this year, could we send a larger group next year when it's safer, so they don't miss out on the trip altogether? Whether that's a fundraising situation or something to bring up later on, but rather than just to miss it and have it not happen for them, could, is that something that maybe we could entertain?
Yeah, I mean, we could, I think we could entertain it if we, you know, when we see what the conditions are, if it were something, you know, we'd have to work it out, because those students, obviously, those students would be freshmen. But we would, you know, we could, we could look and see what those alternatives are. You know, I just think that the, you know, I just...
No, it's not worth the risk now, I'm just thinking if things ever get back to normal.
Right now, you're looking at it going, I can only fit 28 kids on a, on a bus, you know what I mean? Like just trying to, just, just the sheer cost and logistics of trying to get people there, let alone right now, when you come back, everyone would have to quarantine for 14 more days, or we'd have to provide them all COVID testing, so.
I'm more thinking, you know, someday we're going to wake up and, God willing, we'll be back to normal, we'll have a vaccination, and we'll all be back to a normal time, you know, at that point in time, maybe we figure that out.
I think we could, I mean, I definitely think it's something we could try to at least gauge the interest and see what the appetite was for people to, to participate in something like that. The other thing would be, same thing, similar thing with Nature's Classroom, there's nothing saying that we couldn't maybe do it with, you know, two years of kids or something like that. I think we can, we can see where those are, but I mean, we'll have to see... I think we can, we can see where those are, but I mean, we'll have to see, we'll have to see where we are in, you know, as, as time goes on, see where we are in the summer and, and the spring and, and see what it looks like.
I do think it's prudent to, to, you know, vote for this motion, even if the world returned to normal a month and a half, two months from now, it's not enough time for fundraising. It just, you know, there's a, there's a practical aspect to it that I think it's, although unfortunate, prudent for us to take this action. Any further discussion?
Yeah, what, and I think you kind of answered one of my questions was going to be, what is the, if they were going to go in May, what would be the cutoff that they would have to, would it have to be today? I mean, it just, and Matt nailed it, I mean, this is, you know, every kid that comes back from that, it's, it's, I don't know, first of all, they come back like 10 years older too, they all grow up on that, and they have a, I just, this stinks, you know?
And that's why.
I just didn't know what's, you know, in other words, if they were going to go in May, would, when would you have to start?
And that, that's pretty much why this topic is coming up now, because that's what I was pretty much approached from, by the advisor saying, you know, if we're, if, if this is something that's really going to happen in May, now's the time that we need to start like reserving things and, and making reservations and do it. And like I said, just like we saw last year, you know, getting things back from travel companies isn't always the easiest. So you end up, you know, having people fundraise, pay money, we end up putting deposits down, and then if we end up canceling a trip in May. So that's, that's the reason is we don't want to, you know, we don't want to, we hope originally, when we just said we're not going to go in, in October or November, but we'll try to push it off, the idea was, let's try to keep this alive. But I think now the advisors kind of came back to me and they were like, is this really something that's going to happen? Because if it is, we got to start moving on it, so.
Anything else? All those in favor? Unanimous? Thank you.
All right. So the last, last update here under reopening is some calendar changes that we're proposing. The first one is we'd like to change one of the scheduled half days. Right now, December 7th is scheduled as a half day. We'd like to try to change that to December 15th. That's, I think it's going from a Monday to a Tuesday. It'll help balance the green and gold weeks, it also coordinates for one of the days, we already have a, we have some days for technical assistance with Universal Design for Learning. We have a consultant that's scheduled to be with us on, on both of those days actually, but moving it to the 15th would allow us to still access essentially the same PD we were going to do on the 7th. Remote learning days, what we're recommending, or sorry, remote learning half days, what we're recommending is that on the half days, the three half days at this point that I've identified, 11:25, 12:15, and 12:23, that we make those half days remote learning days for everyone so that we could, one, it'll allow us to get people used to the remote learning schedule. And, you know, the other part is really, we were looking at the, just the logistics of when you're running five tiers of busing, of getting people in and out on a half day becomes, becomes kind of messy. So, so that was our, our recommendation was to change the, the half days to remote learning days. And then in the event of snow days or school cancellations, the DESE has, has ruled that we can make, instead of having to have a snow day, we can elect to make the day a full remote learning day and still have that count as time on learning. I put another, this would be on a case by case basis. For example, wide scale power outages may not be appropriate, as like we had on October 8th. So, you know, if, if most of town's without power, it's pretty unreasonable to say we're all remote learning that day. So, and that could, and it could change for anything, right? I mean, if it's a, you know, if it's a blizzard and we really feel that, you know, this is, people are, need to be out trying to just worrying about surviving, then we might say, hey, no, we're just going to cancel school today. But maybe instead of missing three days in a row, the next two become remote learning days or something like that. So, so it would still be on a case by case basis, but the DESE has clarified that we are able to do full remote learning days in lieu of snow days. Because of the day we missed on October 8th, the current last day of school right now would be June 16th. And this is sort of a breakdown, the, this is a breakdown of the in-person days for the green week and the gold, the green cohort and the gold cohort, based on this proposed schedule. And I think you can, I think it works out so that as, when we get to Thanksgiving, both the green and the gold cohorts would have had the exact same number of days of in-person time by Thanksgiving. And then because it sort of flips, because green ends on the, on the two-day week, gold would kind of, lack of a better term, sort of take the lead and they would have two, two extra days by Christmas Vacation. But then when we come back, it would be a green week and green would kind of go back up. So we're keeping a kind of balance, I mean, we started with a three-day week, so obviously one's always a little bit ahead of the other. But this gets it perfectly balanced by the, by the 23rd. And then that does, that is accounting for those half days to be sort of full remote days to kind of just balance that all out. So, so those are all proposals to the, for your consideration. I don't know if there's any questions, if you need more clarification or anything like that.
Would someone like to make a motion to accept the scheduled considerations presented by the superintendent?
So moved.
I'll second.
Any discussion? There being none, all those in favor? Unanimous, thank you.
Thank you, and we'll make sure we communicate that to staff and parents, that these were approved. We'll do that in the next day or two, make sure we get that communication out to parents so they can make any necessary adjustments.
And thank you for the effort to, you know, balance out those, those days. I know that it's, you know, the schedule layered on top of a previous schedule, on top of expectations, and it's, we appreciate the effort.
The next bullet's just on community engagement and, you know, didn't want to lose focus of trying to go back and kind of revisit our strategic plan and trying to make sure that we're looking back at some of those things. So the, the community engagement pages are in here. I have added a few update things. You know, the first couple here, develop a welcoming environment across the district and the district environment committee, we did, we did do that, and that was in 1819, we did do that survey, we did identify some things to start working on. The training, training and learning activities for parents and guardians are kind of encompassed in one of the next updates, same with the two-way communication. So if you see on the next page, there's some updates there. And all it is just, I mean, most of the stuff you're aware of, but it's just sort of kind of going back through some of these parent forums and the different meetings that we did kind of over the summer leading up to the, leading up to the reopening. You know, we did have a couple in-person forums here on August 25th and August 26th when, in, for Spanish-speaking families, one for Portuguese-speaking families. I also think that it's, you know, if you look down to those re-entry meetings that we held between September 9th and 14th, we had 123 meetings where we needed to provide interpreters for those meetings, and we had 15 different interpreters that we were able to actually bring on at some point during the, during those meetings to try to make sure we were able to provide translation for all those meetings. So more, you know, just interpreters for just like an hourly rate, we were able to get in here. And there's a lot of, you know, some of those links that go there, if you have the electronic version, there's some different, different things that different schools are putting together, sort of videos and tutorials and slide shows and stuff for parents to try to help them with the remote learning. And I know that CES is planning on a parent university next week. And we have posted positions for a part-time parent liaison, and we have some funding from that, from the Title III grant that we're trying to look at, and this would be to try to, one, one of the main goals of the parent liaison would try to be to have more on-staff translation capabilities. So, and we do have some money from the Title III grant that we're trying to earmark for that position. We also have, we did apply for a grant for a similar position, more of the family outreach coordinator, if you remember, we talked about that last year when we were talking about the Student Opportunity Act money. And we applied for a separate grant for that, so we're trying to wait on to see what the status of that grant is before we make a move, because if we were awarded that grant, we might be able to buddy that up with some of the money from the Title III grant to really make that, more of that whole coordinator position that we'd like to do, to try to, try to provide support for families during these challenging times. The next initiative is creating a partnership between the school regarding decision-making, and there's some updates, you know, the, we did do the reopening surveys, the registration forms, the school councils. Clinton Elementary School, I think, just held their first school council meeting tonight. The middle school and high school are just finalizing their elections, it's a little bit of a slower start since school, school started a little later, but we are still moving forward with getting our school councils, even if though, even if though their meetings are going to be virtually. CPAC has been meeting all along, I think CPAC has been great, it's supporting, you know, supporting their, their families all through this, all through the summer and everything. LPAC is, currently they're still in creating their bylaws, they're trying to work on another sort of, trying to hopefully work on some more language-focused, like either Spanish or Portuguese, one of each, kind of parent university type sessions in conjunction with the, with the LPAC. So that's sort of what they're working on right now, particularly to just do a check-in now with it, that parents have been able to do it for a little bit to make sure we're answering any questions regarding, you know, remote learning. Expanding partnerships, you know, I think, you know, we did the newsletters, that's, you know, did that in September and October so far, we'll continue with the monthly newsletters. Also, you know, I went and reported to the Board of Selectmen when we first, we came back to school. I think we try to, you know, build a good, good relationship with the, with the town and the community and try to be as transparent as we can through these things. So, then the last one, just as opportunities to promote student civic engagement, and, you know, I know that that's, that's something that got a little, you know, the Mock Town Hall, that was something that we, you know, it's a big event that we like to do too, the eighth grade, and that was unable to happen last year because of the COVID, so some of those strategies have gotten put on hold. But I just figured I would provide a little bit of an update on, on that, just so we can just kind of go back and ground ourselves in the strategic plan and try to think, you know, make sure we're still, feel like we're, we're not skipping out on, you know, missing The, the next, the next one I have is an HR update, and we have, we have extended like at least a draft employment, offer of employment to a candidate. I think it is technically, I believe, due to the, the way the town bylaws are written, that a department head appointment needs to get sort of the approval of the select board. So I believe they are going to formally approve that offer of employment on Wednesday of this week. So hopefully we should have someone on board, well, committed by the end of the week, and then hopefully on board, we're looking at a target start date around November 9th, but, you know, give or take depending on the, the notice, so.
No, that's, that's good news, long process.
Yeah, yep. And the director of technology update, so that posting closed on Monday, whatever the Monday was, the 13th, I think. And we, our committee met that afternoon to review the applications. We identified, I believe it was nine or so people that we extended the offer to interviews for, for the first round. The first sort of half of those were done today, and the second half of the first round interview should be done tomorrow. And then our goal is to try to bring in a, some finalists by the end of the week, so we can try to hopefully identify that candidate soon to at least provide whether it's, whether the person can formally be on board here, or whether they still, they might still have an existing contract, but at least there's some overlap time with Mike so that they can really try to start, you know, learning the ins and outs of everything, so. So we're trying to move right along on that process. And I believe that is the end of my report.
Okay, thank you. Do we have anything from the curriculum committee? Is there anything that anyone wants to add relative to the safety committee?
What's the next one?
What did we say, it was 29th, right? Yeah, it's Thursday, right, 29th? Yep.
Yep.
Okay, and we have copies of the latest newsletter, it's terrific. Any questions on that or anything from the marketing committee on that?
No, we, I just reached out to the members for the availability, we'll probably be setting up a meeting within the next few weeks.
Any feedback on the, on the newsletter, the most recent one? No? Good.
I think they're fabulous.
Yeah, I do too.
Full of information.
Someone did bring up the point that, and I'll, I'll try to find a way to more prominently do it, but I think what we're going to try to do is find a way, it might embed it even under like the superintendent's corner or something, but a way to more prominently maybe display and archive them on the website, so if people wanted to, to go see it, because right now it's emailed out to everybody, but if you, if, you know, if someone was just browsing our page or something like that, they could, they could just click on the, like the newsletter or maybe even go in some archives and just see, you know, PDFs of the old newsletters, so. So I think we might look on trying to get it a little more visibility and sort of a place where it can kind of live on the website.
It's a good idea.
Policies and procedures did not meet, and I don't think there was a need. Facilities?
No, but I would, and I know we've, we've got a lot going on, and Steve's got a lot going on. It's probably been a month, two months, when Phil Duffy mentioned that, that grant to us. And I haven't seen anything or heard anything, I don't know if anybody has, but, I mean, he brought it to the board, said that, you know, there was a possible grant to.
For the fire station?
For the fire station, right, to, to develop it, and then, you know, so I, I mean, I'd like to know what, if it's still out there or if we've got to figure out what we're going to do with it, because.
I can reach out to him.
Yeah. Just by the, if he's put fit in for it, if he hasn't, if they're still out there.
Or if it was one of those things he looked into and found out we didn't quite qualify, and at least we just know and we can put it to bed, yeah.
They hunt us down again.
Yeah, I think that was pre-COVID, wasn't it?
Yeah.
No, I think, I think it actually, I think it might have been right when COVID hit, and I think that it might have almost been.
Till pre-quarantine.
Yeah, but I think it might have been like a COVID, I don't know, there's something that I think had to be connected to like job training or something to try to help with, like unemployment and those types of things, but we'll, we'll see.
I'll reach out, though. Do we have anything new from negotiations subcommittee?
We do have those MOUs, we have received word that they are acceptable by the bargaining units for the secretaries and the instructional assistants. And I do have, I do have copies, they're the same, I don't think you guys have hard copies in your packet of them, I think maybe you got a electronic version, but they're the same as the ones from last week.
Yeah, we have them from last time.
So if you're okay with approving them, then I have copies that we can sign if you guys wanted to.
Great.
If you were willing to, if, if they're acceptable to you.
Well, so I'll entertain a motion to accept the MOA, well, we'll take them one by one or take them as a batch?
I have, well, yeah, go on, but I have a question.
One by one, okay.
On the second one.
Can I have a motion to accept the secretary's MOA?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Motion having been made and seconded, any discussion? Mr. Paley?
No, mine's on the next one.
Okay, all those in favor?
I had to look, I couldn't.
Unanimous, thank you. Can we have a motion to accept the instructional assistance MOA?
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion?
Yeah, my question, on that, I read through it, it had the, the evaluation tool that was, was initially on, is now going to be put off for a year, is that correct?
Yeah, we just, with everything that was going on, we decided to just.
I know, it was, it was, it was a new thing. Is there any chance that you could use it and maybe not, kind of?
Yeah, we wanted to use it to like train the money, almost, to, to introduce it to them, make sure that they understand how it works, so that way next year when we actually like do it, it's new. Yes, that's what we're going to try to do, yep.
Thanks for putting that in.
Yeah.
You know what I meant.
Yeah.
Good. Any other questions? Okay. There being no further discussion, all those in favor? Unanimous, thank you. And then last, we have the superintendent's contract, can we have a motion to accept the superintendent's contract?
So moved.
Can we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I just want to explain, I want to take this down so it can be heard. And I've talked with, with Dr. Meyer and the members of the school committee. First of all, I'm pleased with, with Steve's performance, totally with his, with everything he's done. And my only reason I'm going to vote against this contract is not, and I want to make this clear, and that's why I kind of wrote some notes to myself, so I don't, there's no misunderstanding, there's no assumptions by anyone or, or anybody reads into this. no misunderstanding, there's no assumptions by anyone, or, or anybody reads into this. I want him to stick around, and I, and I've made that clear, and I, he's got two years left on the existing contract, and I just, I've had a hard time with this, I've been thinking about this now for, for months, and I appreciate the board, especially Joel, for, I mean, this was on the agenda several times, and gave me time to think about it. I just would prefer to go through this year with all we got going on, and then, and then, you know, offer a new contract at that point, but where he has two years left, I've just had a hard time with going six years right now. But I do appreciate everyone on the board, you know, their opinion, and I had, I've had conversations, like I say, with, with Steve, so nothing I'm saying here is, is any shock. But I do just want to make it clear that there's no reflection on your performance, it's just me personally, I have a hard time right now, especially where we had another union that, we, basically, and I was in favor of this, in fact, I was one of the ones who recommended with the IAs to not go with the contract now, just to go with a year kind of extension, if you will, because there's just so much uncertainty. So that's why I'm voting no, but again, I'm going to say for the third time, it is no reflection on, on the superintendent.
Understood.
Thank you.
Bring different views to the table, that's fine. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Abstentions being none, four to one, thank you. Anything on the old business? Anything on the new business?
Could I share two things?
Yes.
One I forgot to share, and one that is hot off the press. So I did want to share that on Wednesday, October 14th, we were able to offer the SAT to Clinton High School class of 2021 during the school day here. So 61 Clinton seniors were able to take the SATs in, in school. The CHS Guidance Counseling Team, Lauren Papekian Rose Solart, collected the test fees, organized and ran the test with the help of Mr. Sirmak and the counseling intern Katie Ball. Students also participated in the pre-admission session on Friday, October 9th. This is the first time CHS offered the students a school-day test. The need to offer the, the school-day test came after a majority of the local Saturday testing centers closed due to COVID concerns. Although many colleges have gone with testing optional this year, meaning they don't require the SAT, CHS still wanted to give this opportunity to our seniors. Students were seated six feet apart in the cafeteria, were allowed to take mask breaks outside as needed, all students wore masks for the testing. They said the seniors worked very hard, stayed focused the entire day of the exam, and they're proud of the students and their hard work, so I just thought it was a nice.
It's outstanding, and another example of, of how, at Clinton Public Schools, we're making it work.
And then, the last one, which was literally a phone call at 3 o'clock or something like that, is, we did receive a phone call from the MSBA today, asking for a phone conference with, with me, with someone from the town, with the school committee chair, I know we're, probably the director of facilities there, and the business manager there. So, we're not sure, I mean, it's, it's never a bad thing that the MSBA is reaching out to you to talk, and, and the fact that they're trying to get so many people together means that they're probably trying to see if, what the, you know, gauge, gauge that, given everything else going on, is there still the appetite for a middle school project, you know, in, in town with, you know, everything that's happening? So I don't know if this is, I just don't know yet until we have the call, if this is really something that's sort of a, a strong indication that we are moving forward in the process, or if this is more of a, you know, COVID precaution testing thing that they're putting in. I also don't know, you know, remember, the MSBA submission deadline last year was during the, the shutdown, so I don't know how many SOIs they even necessarily, statements of interest they even got last year. So, so it might be, you know, they might, they might have had a limited number, and now they're reaching out to, to people, so. So we'll see, but that, I think that call's Thursday, so that should give us hopefully some more, I think, is it this Thursday or next Thursday?
It's this Thursday.
This Thursday?
Thursday morning.
Yeah, so hopefully we'll, you know, we'll get a little bit of indication, at least of what the purpose of the call is. Like I said, we're not sure if, if it's a positive, meaning that we could be, you know, moving forward, or if it's just more of a standard kind of checking in with, with all the statements of interest about how has, you know, COVID impacted your statement?